I will open this public hearing on the budget for September the 12th, 2023. We call roll, please.
David Kate?
Here.
Josh Tudor?
Here.
Jack Bonneker?
Here.
Gary Holbert?
Here.
Dan Wonders.
Here. If you have not signed the sign-in sheet, please do so. Clipboard over there with it if you haven't. At this time, I will have the clerk read the guidelines for this public comment on the 2023 or 2024 budget.
Okay. Guidelines for public comment. The Town Council of Centerville, Indiana will encourage and receive public comments at a public hearing on September the 12th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Persons attending the hearing may address the Town Council. The Council of the Town of Centerville on the 2023 budget or any other matter during the public comment portion of the hearing. The Town Council of Centerville, Indiana will accept public comments by those attending the hearing for a maximum of 15 minutes. Each speaker will have the opportunity to speak up to three minutes. Those giving public comments should limit remarks to the three minutes. However, the maximum time for comment may extend within reason. So everyone who wants to speak will have an equal opportunity. Those giving public comment must sign in and approach the microphone once the chair recognizes the speaker. Public comments should state the person's name, address before comment. Please be aware that the Town Council or other public officials are not required to respond to public comments during this hearing and will not answer questions during the comment period.
Okay. At this time, I would ask the clerk to go over the summary for the budget for 2024.
Basically, all the accounts are in balance except for the general fund. And this is taking into account if we spend our, any cash balances that amount. We would be using some of our equity of $286,000 to make it even. Everything else is basically in balance.
Our property tax cap is estimated at $306,800. That's the, that's what they're estimating. And our estimating levy maximum will be $843,001. That is what we have to budget. So are there any questions or comments on the 2024 budget? Anybody? If not, then I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing on the 2024 budget.
I move.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second by Josh. Will you call the roll, please?
David, David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. And it is 7:04. Next, we have the public hearing on the fire station grant. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Here.
Josh Tudor?
Here.
Jack Bonneker?
Here.
Gary Holbert?
Here.
Dan Wonders.
Here. At this time, I will ask the clerk read the guidelines for the public hearing for the fire station grant.
The Town Council of Centerville, Indiana will encourage and receive public comments at a public hearing on September 12th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Persons attending the hearing may address the Council of the Town of Centerville on the fire station grant or any other matter during the public comment portion of the hearing. The Town Council of Centerville, Indiana will accept public comments by those attending the hearing for a maximum of 15 minutes. Each speaker will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. Those giving public comments shall limit remarks to three minutes. However, the maximum time for comment may be extended within reason, so everyone who wants to speak will have an equal opportunity. Those giving public comment should sign in and approach the microphone once the chair recognizes the speaker. Public comments should state the person's name and address before commenting. Please be aware that the Town Council or the public or other public officials are not required to respond to public comments during this hearing and will not answer questions during the comment period.
With that, I will have Donna from Kenna Consulting.
Donna Anderson with Kenna Consulting, the great administrator for the project. I just wanted to go over the, why everything else is the same that it was unless round or so as far as the scope of work is the same, the dollar amounts are the same, $500,000 and $225,000 local match. So the new, the new deadlines, the proposal is due October 20th, December 22nd, the grant application is due, and then January, hopefully January, maybe February, the award announcements of next year. So if the council has any questions on the grant, I know we've been through this a couple of times.
Anybody? Anybody got any questions on?
I think the main thing is we need public comments and letters from the public, and that's most of the criticisms the most.
Would anyone from the public like to comment, please?
As you said, it's about the same as the first two things, but some of the stuff we're needing to do is to enlarge our training room. It's not been, I mean, it was built back in the 80s, so it was built for us and us only. Now we train with everybody. We are right now in the process of starting a state mandated class, and we are going to do that over in Richmond's training facility. So it will be, everything will be together and we'll have plenty of room to do that. So the second thing was we would like to add one double drive-through bay so that we will have some extra room for needed equipment in the future. One of the things that we are anticipating, our ISO insurance as services organization rating for your insurance is based on some certain items and things that we do and don't do. And right now, the last time we talked to them to try to get them to come in and reevaluate ours, they told us that we, there were three things we had to have. One was two fire stations. The second was, let me think of that, three engines, and the third was an aerial truck because of all the downtown buildings. And as you'll notice, if you drive north of town and especially northwest, a lot of the houses are three stories, and so we really can't reach the top of them. So right now, we have two firehouses. We have three engines. There's one thing left, and hopefully if we can get that taken care of here in the near future, we will be able to go back for a reevaluation of your and my insurance rating. So the other thing, another thing we are anticipating needing or we do need is an exhaust system. Station one has seven trucks in it, and all but one of them are diesel. So OSHA requires that we have an exhaust system to vent the building so that, and they don't want us to run trucks inside the station, which makes it kind of rough in the winter time when we do weekly squad duties, weekly truck checks, and the trucks have to sit outside because we can't let them run inside and build up carbon monoxide. And the last thing I think was on the list was a fire alarm system to notify someone if we do have a fire. Again, apparatus is not cheap. Those seven pieces of equipment down there, a couple of them are the smaller, like the pickup trucks and stuff. But the engines, we are in the process of specing out a new engine for 2027 is when we'll be getting it, hopefully. And right now, they're quoting us $600,000 for the truck. So we're kind of silly if we don't put an extinguishing system in because if we lose those trucks, we got to replenish them. So some of the things on the improvements, the building was built in 1980, and we moved into it in 81. And at this point, we've not really done any expanded improvements. One of the things that does affect though is back 40 years ago, we ran 150 calls a year. Right now, if we continue to the rate we're going right now, by the end of the year, we'll be over 600 runs. So that's what we're shooting for, so we would really appreciate it if everybody could write letters and be in favor of this, so we can get our improvements done. So that's all I got.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm Jack Bonneker. I'm a resident, 22 years, 504 Poplar Street here in Centerville, Indiana, 10-year board member. Deal with a lot of the fire department. Dennis brought up a lot of good points to what benefits the department and the community. The actuality of all this is to increase their ability to become safer with the residents and provide you a better service. They respond all the time, not just to fires, but a lot of medical runs, so just keep that in mind that these medical runs are really important, too. One thing I thought he would mention that he didn't, we have facilities there for our male firefighters, but if you'll notice, we have a lot more female firefighters now than we had before. Our ability to serve the community better is with more firefighters. And I think we are now up to at least four or five female firefighters out of our 23 or 25, so, and that's on a daily rise. Other departments, Richmond and other Wayne County volunteer fire departments are now having more female firefighters, and we don't have a system where they can come in and shower and do everything that another firefighter needs to do, and that is a definite necessary along with all the other safety things. Again, we appreciate anybody's comments, feedback, letters to the community, turn them to the clerk. Clerk will make sure that they get back to Kenna. I'll write another one and try to update some things, but it sounds like we're beating a dead horse, but we're not. We've been trying to get some money for quite a long time. We're going to go for this round, and with the good Lord willing, we'll be able to acquire some upgrades to a system and a building that definitely has been needing them. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I say something? Josh Tudor, 511 Will Oak Court. It's kind of the same thing I've said for every one of these meetings, but the reality is at some point, this community and this council will have to spend money to bring them into compliance. Their building is not in compliance for OSHA, and those things that Dennis mentioned are not suggestions. They have to be done. So there's no reason not to, not to take advantage of the grant and get all we can out of the money we have to spend already. That's a wise way to spend your money when we're going to have to spend it anyway. Also, correct me if I'm wrong, but that ISO rating as it goes up opens you up to quite a bit more grant money as well, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So as a council, we're going to have to spend money. As the community, we're going to have to spend money. They have to have the exhaust, they've got to have the fire alarms. There's other things that we have to spend money on. It's just advantageous for everybody that we get X dollars more and potentially even reduce what we have to spend. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
So my name is Phil Beadle. I'm at 506 Willow Drive here in Centerville. It's as simple as investing in ourselves. You know, investing in the fire station is no more difficult than investing in the water system and the sewage system and the electrical system. It's a service that we've all come to expect, and if we don't invest in this, then we're not going to have that service that's available, that's expected for us. So yeah, like Josh said, we're going to spend the money one way or another. We might as well do our best to apply for the grant and get as much of the free government money as we can. It only makes good financial sense to do that. So I would be strongly in support of this grant and the upgrades to the emergency services station, the fire station here at Centerville.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I might also add to some of this that during the pandemic, we had to use the fire station to hold our council meetings in because that was the only facility where we could spread, you know, six feet and accommodate everybody for our council meeting. And then in times of disaster, there appears to be, you know, quite a few of those going around right now. A lot of the people that we have here in our community that are on oxygen and other, you know, medical needs, that if that would happen here, we would have to take and open up the fire station so those people could. Electricity goes off, they got to have a warm place, and that would be one of the main places where they would go. So here again, from emergency standpoint, we need to get these upgrades and get this available so that if by chance we have a disaster, whether whatever related, we would be able to accommodate that. So that's, that's one thing I think that a lot of times we overlook because we've been very fortunate that we've not had any major, but there's a few places, even in Wayne County that was out of power for two days here just recently. And that puts a burden on us where to take these people to make sure that their oxygen works, that they're warmed with the elderly and so forth. So we really need that. Does anybody else have any comment? If not, please give us letters of support. Send them here to the city building, and we will get those forwarded. And with that, I would entertain a motion on closing this public hearing on the fire station grant. So I got a motion by Josh.
A second.
A second. Got a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. 7:20. I will open the Centerville Town Council meeting for September the 12th, 2023. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Here.
Josh Tudor?
Here.
Jack Bonneker?
Here.
Gary Holbert?
Here.
Dan Wonders.
Here. David, would you give us a prayer?
Dear my Father Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings you've given to us, that you keep your hand upon our community and keep us safe, be with us to make good decisions, be a lamp to our feet, guide us and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
First item that we have, will you call the roll, please? We did. We did. Okay. I passed. Passed. Got down here twice. The first item we have then is the approval of the August 8th, 2023 council meeting minutes. Has everyone gone over those? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve them.
Motion's made.
Got a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Gary. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item is the approval for the minutes from August 29th, 2023. That was the work session. Are there any comments, additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept August 29th minutes.
So moved.
I got a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item we have is a motion to approve the claims. Has everyone gone over those? Are there any questions or corrections on those? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the claims for all this.
September.
I have a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
Gary.
Or Gary, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. Billing adjustments, I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Motion made to accept the billing adjustments for 44923.
Got a motion by Jack to accept the billing adjustments for 44923. Do I have a second?
Okay, a second.
All right, I have a second by Gary. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of the allowance report, I would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye. Motion carried. Main Street.
Do you want to go ahead?
You guys go ahead.
Go first? Okay, you're up. I'm with the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce. We've been working with Main Street Centerville on bringing a project to the walking path. Did you guys all see the designs that I emailed?
Yes, we have a copy.
Okay, good. So with the chamber, we have a committee and it's called HYPE. HYPE is helping young professionals engage. It's towards 21 and 40-year-olds. With that, we work on professional development, training, social activities and volunteering in the community. HYPE had applied for a grant with the Chamber of Excellence, which is with Wayne County Foundation, and we were approved. Well, with that, we are trying to decide where in our community, as Wayne County, we could use those funds. So working with Centerville's Main Street, we kind of see how the work they've been doing here and what you guys have been doing in the town, and we thought, what could we do to help you guys? So talking with Sherry, we identified a place in the park where we could maybe do some painting, some interaction items. So she had some teachers draw up a few of these designs for us, and then one of our HYPE members brought them all to life by creating the images for us on the computer. And with that, we would use those drawings and hopefully put them between Morton and First on the walking path. And these designs are geared more to the toddler age, so like if we have a playground for those kids that can play on the playground, well, then we have parents that bring younger kids that cannot go to the playground yet. So this kind of helps them interact and gives them something to do. So we're trying to gear it towards all children that are at the park. With that, I also started working with Metal Creek Hardware in Hagerstown, started discussing paint, how we go about that, because I'm going to be honest, I have no clue what paint you should use on pavement or asphalt. But they have suggested the exterior latex paint. He said that's what all the schools use when they do their senior painting spots for their senior year. So he suggested that. He also said not to use a clear coat or sealer because it will get slippery. So I learned, I've been learning a lot about paint. He let me know how much the gallon of paint would cover, and it should last anywhere from two to three years. And with that, with the grant money that we have, we can handle all the supplies for the first time. So we can handle all the paint, we can handle the paintbrushes, making sure the utensils are needed. We will have volunteers from HYPE that will do all the painting itself. So we are geared to take care of the project from beginning to end. Once it's completed, we have talked to Main Street Centerville and asked them if they would take ownership at that time. So that way, it can be kept up when it's needed. So with that, Sherry has talked to me with that. But then, like I told her, once they take ownership, to please still reach out to HYPE and let us volunteer and still kind of try to be involved and give back. Because a lot of times, what we're seeing, these young professionals, they take pride, and this is something for them to take pride in, in their community. If they're walking through Centerville or they come through our toy days, it's something they can say, hey, I did that. So it's just something that's good for the community.
So a couple of things I wanted to add to that, not to correct you, but actually, the ladies that came up with this are actual physical therapists in our community, and three of them worked together to put this together. This is called a Mind's in Motion Path, and if you Google that, you're going to find some really cool things. When I taught at the Methodist preschool for 10 years, I did this, and there is proven facts between doing these, these movements and brain development with children. So it's really a cool thing. So not only is it fun, but it'd be cool, too. And one additional thing that I think you might have forgotten to mention, but maybe you weren't as crazy about the design as I was, I thought it might be fun to get some of the HYPE participants, some of their children, to actually do the path. We could videotape it, put a QR code down by the path, so if people are unsure of exactly how to do this, they could, they could go, the QR code, take them to the Main Street Centerville site, and they could see how to do that. Now, to my knowledge, none of the other communities have anything like this, so it might draw people in from other areas because quite frankly, I have a new granddaughter. If anybody wants to see pictures, I'm happy to share. But that being said, I would definitely, definitely, knowing the value of this, I would bring her down here on the day that I keep her to let her repeat the pattern over and over because it just helps brain development. And not only is it fun- And, and not only is it fun, but it's, it's educational and it's, it's good, healthy project for, for our community. So, that being said, um, first, we'd like to ask you guys if you have any questions or concerns about the project, but then we are going to ask you to approve the project so that we can continue with that. So, questions or concerns?
Well, I mean, I, I've got some that I think, you know, we need to discuss at the work session. Give me some time to get with our legal, you know, on, on that.
Okay.
Myself, because, uh, you know, number one, want to make sure on the safety of the project, you know, as far as I'm concerned, uh, and also, what's the liability, uh, and who's gonna do what, where and how? So, uh, you know, my request would be to put that, uh, on the work session agenda and then get, try to get some answers, you know, on that side for the town.
Okay.
Do you have a perspective, start date on the project?
We're waiting, once you guys approve it.
Okay.
We'd like to try to start in October.
Okay.
Kind of our timeframe.
I think it's a great idea. Um, I think we just want to make sure we dot all our i's and cross our t's so you don't get shut down in the middle of it.
That's fine. Laven, I know I made that comment in my, um, presentation there, just, I know eventually we'll have to work with someone directly to make sure I have access, and I don't want to interfere with anything else that might be going on at the park, too, so just that way I have communication directly with someone.
But with paint, you know, we're, we're hoping to try to get it done still yet this year before it gets too cold for painting. So that would really be our, I think, our, our deadline on it is just, you know, hopefully have the good enough days after approval to get the painting done and have a work day where we can get the, the Hype participants in to do that, so. And at the Ma- and as she said, the Main Street meeting last night, we did vote to , uh, take on the, the maintenance of it, meaning that every two to three years when it does need repainted, you know, we would take on the purchasing of that paint and work the pipe, or make that a part of our community work day that we do every year in the spring, too, so we can, you know, with, whether we have templates or whatever we have to recreate the pieces, we would just freshen it up so that we know that it will look good.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, one question I got, do we do, is there a lot of vehi- is there vehicle traffic any at any time there, and is?
No motor vehicles are allowed.
Okay, just to make sure. And then, and, you know, then we don't do snow removals, so we're not?
I try not to do snow.
Okay, so that, that would be my serious thing about damaging the project. My, my joking thing is, I want to see on the video the first adults that start joining into this game. I'm sure that'll happen, too, so. If it happens. We might, we might, we might just have to worry about that. I, I square danced at archway days, so, um, yeah. There's video of that out there, too.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you hearing us.
Yeah.
And I'll let, I'll go switch over to just a couple notes about Main Street, and then we have Will for Christmas in Centerville. So, we're taking up a lot of your time tonight.
No.
Thank you, Chantel, very much for that. We, we appreciate the chamber wanting to invest in our town. They could have picked any of the towns to invest in, and they chose Centerville, so I'm very happy about that, so. Um, just to give you guys a brief update, what Main Street Centerville is working on, it's a lot, and we even had to cut some things from our agenda yesterday, so that's a great thing that we have an active Main Street, and, um, we are working, um, very, very strongly on eclipse planning. I know the last time I visited, I mentioned that. Um, there, there's a lot that's involved in that, and so we're trying, our businesses are trying to be prepared to have the inventory for people, and, and there's all sorts of logistics, there's all sorts of committees that are formed, that are being spearheaded by the Wayne County Tourism Bureau, and so just a general note for anybody in our community that would like to, to, you know, we, I call that a sprint volunteering, you know? Like you're volunteering for five years. If you could lend a hand for something between now and April and would mind, wouldn't mind joining on a committee to help with logistics or some planning or some publicity, that's a great service opportunity for our community, and, um, you can get with Main Street people for that. Um, also, we, uh, had had a request to repeat our scarecrows that we had last year, so we would very much like to do that unless there was any major objections by the board, um, for that. And again, if you guys want to talk about that at the work session, but we just wanted to repeat the same thing. However, what we were gonna do this year, instead of making, um, public prizes for people visiting the scarecrows, we were gonna have a contest for, uh, kind of like the best business scarecrow. So more like that, so we're gonna get our businesses, and I'm not gonna lie, Janelle Sparks with Lavender and Sage is on it. She's like, she's, she's out for blood. She wants the best scarecrow in town. So, um, so that was something else that we have going on, and, uh, just wanted to let you guys know, uh, as many of you may already know, Kyle Turner, who, uh, started Main Street Centerville, I don't know how many years ago, if anybody knows.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen? Good, good math. Thank you, that's great. In twenty sixteen, Kyle started Main Street Centerville, and he has served on the board and as president for quite some time, and he is taking a break from a board member position. He's still gonna be, uh, lending a hand with us, and with that, I wanted to let you guys know and let the town know that we are going to be honoring him with a new award that we're going to be starting in our town called the Kyle Turner Hometown Spirit Award, and that we're not going to necessarily give it on any particular year, or there doesn't have to be a recipient. Then when we see somebody like Kyle who's super invested in our town and, and with blood, sweat, tears, money, the whole thing, we want to make sure that we recognize them, so we're going to be starting that. So, um, we would love if, if there would be a place somewhere here in the city building that we can hang a plaque that we're having made for the future recipients, and of course for Kyle. Um, you can let us know about that. It's, I mean, we'll find someplace to put it, but this seems like the logical place, this or the library, something like that. So, um, we just wanted to publicly thank Kyle, even though he's not here, just to let everybody know that we appreciate all that he's done for our town and will continue to do, so. That's it. Are there any other questions for the Main Street Centerville portion of things? If not, I'll turn it over to Christmas in Centerville.
Well, I know on their scarecrow, because they did that last year, if you wanna, some, wanna okay that, that's, we can do that, because that's.
That'd be great.
If anybody wants to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion on that. I've really enjoyed that, too.
Yep. I'll second it.
And I got a motion by Gary and a second by David. Call the roll, please.
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Halbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye. Move forward with that one.
Great, thank you very much, and we appreciate your consideration on the path, and feel free to reach out to myself or Chantel with any questions or concerns you have. We're happy to, to work with you on that, and even if there's, uh, something that the therapist could help us answer questions for you as far as the safety and the things that these students will be doing, you know, the, the availability of what we would encourage them to do, you know? So, anyway, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna take a photo.
Christmas in Centerville.
I'll be pretty quick. A little white, for those of you that don't know me, there's a few new faces. Um, as requested during the last meeting, um, our committees got together and we discussed the timing of the event, and we're looking at four to eight. Um, we may go a little bit over the eight o'clock time. Uh, we're gonna start a movie, uh, shortly after the parade. It may go over to, I mean, maybe eight thirty-ish.
What is the date again?
December second.
Thank you.
So we're looking to get that approved, and one, uh, other option or, uh, item that I forgot to mention during the last meeting is, we're looking for approval to put the candy canes back on the telephone poles like we did last year.
Good.
We'll take care of installing those, and we're looking at adding new decorations to those as well.
Well, first, I need a motion on, uh, letting them have that from four to eight.
Probably a little bit after eight. Let's just say four to nine.
Yeah, four to nine.
I'd make that motion for December second.
Okay, got a motion by Gary.
I'll second.
Have a second by Josh. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Halbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye. Motion carried on that, and for the, entertain a motion on putting the candy canes on the light poles.
So moved.
Got a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Halbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye. Motion carried.
Do you gentlemen have any questions for me, comments or concerns?
Parade time, Will.
Thank you.
What time's the parade?
Uh, seven.
Seven.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Row row.
Anybody here from Centerville Homecoming? I got a call from them. They would like, like last year, uh, have fireworks after the, uh, football game, and so they were requesting permission, uh, same as deal as they did for the youth, you know, like the youth league, same area and so forth, so, uh, they did that last year, and they would like to do it again this year.
Their date on that?
Uh, Homecoming is.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
And any permitting or anything that?
Well, they would have to have their.
Yeah, I haven't really talked to you.
Town insurance, so. Same guy.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that all that, will allow that along with all the training with the fire chief.
Okay. I have a motion by Jack to allow the fireworks for the school homecoming. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Halbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye. Motion carried. I will let them know. Kevin?
You got anything on the agenda?
Push it on. Some general stuff. Before I get started with the general stuff, I would like to thank the Centerville Town Council for allowing me to participate in the AIM Municipal Management Institute. For those of you who don't know, any elected appointed municipal official who is a member of AIM is eligible to participate. Members who complete the Municipal Management Institute Certification Program directly impact their communities with knowledge and experience that they gain by attending eligible events, and participants develop management leadership skills and learn new techniques for tackling common issues and improving citizen service. On August twenty-fourth of this year, I did receive my certification from AIM as a municipal manager. I just wanted to let everybody know how much I appreciated the opportunity to get the education I have gotten, to continue my education now that I am certified.
Well, we appreciate you taking the effort and achieving that. So, that's, uh, takes a lot of, lot of years to get there.
Yeah. Took about five. Okay. Now, I believe you all have copies of quotes for pickup and the dump truck for you. Um, the market is very tight on municipal vehicles, and I did have one manufacturer that just refused the quote because they don't know when the next round will be available for the dump. But that's what I have for you. Take a minute, like, do you, um?
So we're looking at fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the lowest bid for the pickup.
For the three forty ton pickup, that was the lowest bid we received. And I will be upfront with you on both the trucks. We'll have additional expense of putting plow hedges on as well as emergency lighting.
Are there two quotes per, is that what we're looking at?
Um, there are three quotes on the pickups. Um, the quotes, the dump truck come in late because it was previously spoken for, but they backed out on it, and basically that's the only dump truck that's out there in the municipal pricing range.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things that we're learning to get to is there is getting less and less availability, and if the UAW goes on strike, uh.
I believe they're supposed to announce that on Thursday.
Yeah, then you won't be seeing anything produced for quite a while, so.
So the Kelly Chevrolet and the All-American Chevrolet are both pickup truck quotes, correct?
Correct.
And are they both new vehicles?
They are both new vehicles.
Okay. Does the All-American quote come with the, the plow?
No, these are municipal setting envelope. If we wanted to come with a fully outfitted package, we have to order, and we said it might be late twenty-five, even before we would see the quotes back down.
What I saw on the, the Kelly quote was that it had the snowplow prep. I'm just curious if the.
Yeah.
All-American has the same, if they're the same.
Yes, it has a snowplow prep on it as well, but that is just a prep for plug-in the wiring.
Okay. So, there were just a couple of difference in the quotes, and the All-American didn't break down what was optioned out like the other.
Yes.
And one is a thirty-five hundred and one's a twenty-five hundred.
Yes, um, the one at Kelly is a ton. It's all they had available with the diesel in it. And the true trouble we're having with some of our diesels, being a small community and not being able to get out and use them, it has caused us fuel issues on the backside.
And the twenty-five hundred is a gas truck?
Yes, it is gas.
And that's what you'd prefer at this point, correct?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion on the low bid for All-American for that truck. So moved. I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Halbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye. Motion carried.
And I would ask that you entertain a quote on the ton Chevy dump truck from Hughesville Chevrolet.
And I might add on this one that, uh, this particular would be one that we would have to put the salt box on.
Um, actually, I'm looking at rolling up there's a three-quarter ton down and putting the salt box on it.
Okay.
We have a lot of times in the winter when we need an empty dump body, so if we could just put some weight on the ton truck to plow with and dump the weight off and use it for brush pickup or whatever happens in the event of the storm.
Okay.
That issue we thought for four years now, trying to pull salt bodies off, hitting them back on.
Kind of weight would you use?
Um, basically, we're just using sand or stone as the weight.
Easily dumped in, easily dumped out?
Um, the stones easily dumped in and out. The sand can freeze pretty tight at times.
And this one is for sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents?
That is correct. It is actually still in transit. Once it arrives, that will be put on the cabin chassis and they're estimating late October, we could take possession. And I will say that the dump truck was still available as of Friday night when I received the quote notification that the other buyer backed out. And the pickup truck was still available as of Thursday. They were gonna give me a call if it happened. Uh, we sold. I haven't heard from them, so I'm assuming that it's also still available.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on the dump truck.
I'll make that motion. You can call both places at eight o'clock in the morning.
I have a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Josh. Do you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I appreciate it. I don't know how much care...
We do too.
That's all I got under general unless you have anything for me.
Building Commissioner?
Yeah, for August, we had twenty-three building permits, you know, that's issued for a total of, uh, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And we had twenty-six code enforcement violations resulting in five hundred and fifty dollars in fines being issued for various violations.
Please, sir.
Everyone received my report, they emailed to you. Okay. Uh, just a few things I wanted to mention. Um, you probably already wear this, but this will be the third week that Daniel and Mason have been in the academy, so hopefully that will speed along. They seem to be doing well. Um, also, our new school resource officer, Andrew Jordan, uh, he's in class this week for school resource officer up in Greenfield. And then our new female reserve officer has completed her forty-hour pre-basic training. So, you'll be seeing her out on the street here. Actually, she was out last Friday night in uniform. Um, then I want to remind everyone that it's gonna be a busy weekend on the twenty-second with the homecoming, but that also is the same weekend for the Warm Glow Festival, their fall festival up there. So, if you're going north on Centerville Road, Interstate seventy, their entrance up there, just be aware there's always a lot of traffic in there, Dan.
Yes.
You'll probably see Dan out there working some of that traffic, I'm assuming. But, um, they're expecting a big crowd this year and more vendors, so that's gonna be a good thing. Um, also, the two, uh, radios I got from, uh, Surplus, um, just want to let you know, we saved quite a bit of money because for the two radios altogether, including the programming, the batteries and all that stuff, was, uh, six hundred and fifty dollars for two radios.
Wow.
Which normally would've cost us between twenty-five hundred and three thousand, so we did good there. If I have any questions for me? Thanks.
Streets?
Um, we have a copy of the agreement for our twenty-twenty-three-two community crossings for engineering, bidding and inspection at an amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. I asked the U of U of having Dan Wonderson as president of council sign off on the agreement. Legal has reviewed and found no issues.
I would entertain a motion, Kevin's request for the community crossing and allow me to sign off on it.
Seven moved.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Jack. Do you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, and our twenty-twenty-two-two community crossings paving is scheduled to begin within the next two weeks. And I will remind you, it is gonna be South McManroe from forty to Willow Grove. So, once I get a final date on this, I will notify the schools so they'll know what's going on, as well as notifying Greenfield that it will be paving, so their unofficial detour will be the official detour until I take it. I'm sorry, guys, you're gonna have to go along.
Let's do it.
Um, that's basically all I got under street unless you have anything for me.
Okay. Water?
Sir?
Okay, about the only thing I have underwater is an engagement for legal services for a utility bond for water utilities.
What we have, we need for bond, upon council, uh, we have our quote from, uh, Barnes and Thornburg. And I would entertain a motion to accept this engagement letter from Barnes and Thornburg, our quote, and to allow... I have permission for you to sign. And permission for me to sign that.
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, got a motion by Jack. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Gary. Do you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you for that.
Might add, uh, with that on this, what, uh, we are looking at is now is SRF has agreed to, uh, give us up to two million dollars, uh, in forgivable, uh, loan for lead lines in this project.
I, I, I'd also submitted along with that my agreement for local council.
Yeah, I was going to...
Okay.
That, uh, just, you know, that will go a long way, uh, on the lead lines because that would be forgivable. The other item that we have along with that is the, uh, letter for, uh, legal for his services, uh, on this. And so I would entertain a motion to accept the agreement with, uh, legal and allow me to sign it. Seven. I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Do you call the roll, please?
Uh, David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I believe that's all I got underwater unless you have anything for me.
Now, I'm good with the fire department.
I thought I was gonna skip my name.
Yeah, I mean, your name wasn't on here.
We're not forgetting you. Don't have a whole lot. Couple of events that, uh, we're gonna be dealing with. Um, Ed made the comment about Warm Glow. Uh, they have asked us if we will, uh, do medical coverage for them, being that it's so hard to get in and out. So, we will be getting somebody's medical cart. Um, and we're, we're gonna be up there Saturday and Sunday. He said, was talking about the number of people. She told us they're expecting five to eight thousand people. Wow, for the weekend. So, anyway, we'll be up there. Uh, the other thing I got is it's getting close to food drive time. Uh, we have been asked by Walmart if we would bring a truck out to Walmart and park it so they could do a fill-the-truck type thing there like we did it. Uh, I think we did one at Needler's last year. So, what we're gonna do is probably take one of the squads and the trailer, see if they can fill the trailer up, so, um, that will be on October the seventh from nine to five. That's all I got.
Okay. Um, great, a great program by the fire and police department, so I might add just out there to the public that that does help, uh, many needy families during the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. Um, and we don't limit ourselves just to Centerville, out surrounding areas. We do go out and reach out to those who reach out that need help, so, um, Dennis and Ed are both really good resources for that. And then Kevin has played a big hand in that the last few years as well, so I appreciate what you three do for that program. Um, before I end up with water and, and fire, last Saturday, uh, spent about three hours at the Methodist church on, on, uh, Saturday. And, uh, they recognized Oliver P. Morton. And I would've never thought there was that much that I didn't know, but if any of you are really interested in it, there's several folks that could give you a lot more information than what I could even repeat. But I was just amazed at what that gentleman did in the eighteen hundreds, especially during the Civil War. And not just for the state of Indiana, but our community as well and our country, so he did do quite a bit for a lot of folks and set a lot of things in motion that I still think today are rolling forward for us to do the things that we need to do as local legislators and federal legislators and state legislators, so, um, and that was for his two-hundredth birthday. Um, he, he passed away pretty early in his fifties, so, but he got quite a bit done in that amount of time and lifespan, so thanks for letting me represent the town and, and very interesting, like I said, and, um, that's about all I got.
Waste water?
I did get the Changray ordered for the slot removal. As soon as it comes in, they will schedule and be in and get it installed. We're still crippling along with what we got there. Outside of that, everything's all well and good at the wastewater side, so, so I got under wastewater unless you have anything for me.
Might as well stay there electric.
Okay. Well, some good news. Um, we do have part of the material on the ground for the Mattie Harris upgrade. They look at starting that yet this week or the first to next. We're looking at seven to eight weeks to complete the project if everything goes as planned. So, as soon as they can get started, the upgrade will be starting along Mattie Harris out to Inertion Island, so we can get the twelve KV out there and pull a little load off of our antiquated substation back here.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Town manager, well, during this switchover, will there be any, uh, outages or inconveniences for any of the residents?
There'll be a short outage. Once we get along and get ready to make the transfer over and throw the switch, the residents will be, it'll be posted on the website once we have...
A minimal half an hour, hour, five hours?
I'm gonna say a maximum of three hours to do the complete switchover to make sure all the cutouts and fuses are in. It should be shorter than that, but we'll go long-term for an...
So, everybody needs to keep their eye on the website or that, that this will be happening and...
Yes. Like I said, once they get started, the weather's gonna play a big role in this, so I can't give you an approximate time it's gonna happen, but we'll keep you updated on the progress out there. And we had two-hour outages. One was a cutout failure. The other one is unknown. We feel it was some pre-lims that forced our lines together, but we can't prove that for sure yet. We did cut the limbs, we suspect, but, uh... That's basically all I got under electric unless you have anything for me.
Nope.
The charging stations does seem to be holding a steady increase, so...
That's good.
That's a good thing.
Yep. I might add on the, the electric, uh, case you aren't aware, but, uh, here in Wayne County, uh, we did have, uh, we didn't, but part of Wayne County about close to two-thirds of it, uh, had a power outage, uh, control. And, you know, so there is issues out there that's, you know, going around that, uh, I don't know what caused this one, uh, but, you know, make sure whenever alerts come out, we will try to get it on our website and stuff so you know if there's a rolling, you know, brown out or blackout or, or what, if there's something goes awry that could affect us, especially with winter coming on. So, you know, we hope everybody will pay attention to the website and that's one way that we can put these messages out to you, uh, so that you can prepare for them if we can, you know, something's coming, so...
Or ways to avoid it.
Or ways to avoid it, yes, so... Clerk, got anything?
I need a resolution for the grant application for the fire department.
Okay.
A number?
You got a number on it?
It would be, uh, two, uh, twenty-twenty-three dash zero seven. It's a resolution authorizing the application submission and local match commitment for the fire department.
Twenty...
Dash...
Twenty-twenty-three...
Twenty-twenty-three. Oh, seven. Oh, seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion on that grant application of twenty-twenty-three dash oh seven.
Okay, I have a...
Read by title only.
Well, this is just...
Oh, okay, my bad, yeah, my bad.
I have a motion by Jack to accept resolution twenty-twenty-three dash oh seven for the grant application for the fire department. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Josh. Do you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Let me make these announcements. Ambassador Healthcare is, has a new inpatient dialysis and they're having a grand opening on September the twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Everyone is invited to that, but they need you, if you are going to that, to make your reservations, uh, to them, so they know how many people are gonna show up. Their phone number is area code seven-six-five-five-eight-zero-eight-eight-seven-eight, if you would like to come and join in to that grand opening. Also, um, we will have a planning commission meeting on Thursday, September the twenty-eighth at seven PM here in the council room. And then there is a work session, uh, for September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, here in the council room at seven PM. Homecoming parade and the fireworks will be on September twenty-second, uh, twenty-twenty-three, after the homecoming game at the high school. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn Centerville Town Council meeting for September the twelfth.
Seven moved.
I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Do you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonderson.
Aye. Carried and it's eight oh eight.